All right. Thanks. I'm calling the meeting to order. It's Monday, December 30th. Excuse me. First to order our business is to salute the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to quickly go over the past minutes if we could. So, um...
I guess just, okay, the 23rd one.
So I've got non-public, 8:45 on December 23rd.
I have nothing there.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the public minutes? December 23rd?
I have nothing there.
Move approval is presented?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And you get another non-public afterwards.
Monday, 40.
Oh, right. Okay.
So I will move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Got a letter from... I guess we can go through these recommendations from Jim when we get to other highways and streets or...
Sure.
Yeah.
Just getting my businesses. Chief Thompson.
Welcome back, sir.
General Government Buildings and Emergency Management.
This is getting to be a regular thing with you, isn't it?
Yeah, it's up without.
Which one are you doing first?
Well, the General Government Buildings first.
Sure.
In this case.
Do you need copies of anything?
If you have, that's great. At least it's something that's different.
On government buildings, it changed slightly and I didn't get here until like 5:00 or 4:00. And for Diane, it went down by $100. So what I give you was slightly different than what she may have already given you as far as...
Thank you.
Oh, actually, you know what? I've got a whole packet. If I... I'll take that one back and... I just broke up a packet. So...
Thank you. Melvin Village Heat, I think she's got it here, 2250.
Uh, it's different than what... It's updated from what was in the packet we got before, though. Right?
I just wanted to make sure that I didn't...
I'll get his copy.
I got a copy right here. I just broke your packet up. So the $1,600 that I was looking for, that I didn't have, the difference was that the building maintenance, I spent five over $500. I figured it would be roughly $1,600 bucks that were thereabouts that it would cost for the following year. Not trying to go over again.
Yep. As we're looking at this first sheet that you gave us, Melvin, Mira, Lake Stations, the item we had, we were in question about when we met last week was the maintenance line, dash 630, right? And you have adjusted your request to 5876 from 5961.
Basically, what I did was I went through and looked to see how much I had spent for that.
Yep.
What and where it was spent. So that line, instead of where I normally had requested $500 for that particular line, I went $1,500 in that, hoping that we don't have to have any further... That we get most stuff out of the way, but I'm sure that we'll have something as far as the house.
Okay. We've got, on the fire station maintenance line on this?
Yeah.
About $57, $5,876. Is that not right?
That's what I'm requesting, as far as the budget was.
And we talked about last week, was it 5961? And you didn't have your...
I didn't have everything. And I did find... And in the meantime, the Septic Company?
Yeah.
They had got the estimate back as far as how much it costs to pump, which I didn't have, and that dropped the... dropped that by 100 bucks.
But the 2929 is part of that?
No, that is to show you where the money went this year, as far as everything. So that you have a breakdown of what categories it actually went to as far as the different money that was spent. Gives you a better idea of what it cost me to do the mowing, the different repairs, and where it actually went to. And the actual request is $5,876.
Right. Which would put our grand total on other government buildings up to 1,800, $1,800,000.
So that was our outstanding...
$1,800,000. The math isn't working.
The only line we had outstanding from last week was the fire station maintenance.
Right.
So I will move that we approved that.
Bottom line, are you? Bottom line?
Yeah, 630, fire station maintenance.
That's $5,876.
$5,876.
Seven, 14, here, one.
Five, eight, six, one.
Hmm? $5,876.
Right.
I'll second that.
For discussion, maybe?
That makes... That's okay with you, right?
Yeah, that's what he's requesting.
Okay. Now, if we look at the whole budget for this other government buildings, that pushes us up to $119,047, just adding the $5,876, which is $7,600 overall this year.
And that's the driveway ceiling is about $6,000, right? So that's the only... That's why I'm...
The improvements?
Yeah, the improvements. It's $6,700.
$370,000.
No, it was $6,700.
Yeah, but... Thirty-seven hundred, that is for the driveway ceiling.
And again, we discussed that if it's something that's going to...
Impact you.
Impact the budget, then...
And... Excuse me. While we're here, we've got a $2,500 number on the townhouse improvements versus $1,300, so that's $1,200.
Where... What line is that? Top, right in the middle?
730.
Right. Yep.
So change that number from $1,300 to what?
$2,500.
Well, is there any... We don't have those... That contract to do the encumbrance.
Uh, we can... Yeah, we do.
That's with Jeff Walker, right?
No. No, it's right here.
There you go.
First Scott Thompson.
I hate to push this. I mean, we're tirelessly close to zero summing here.
Well, we have funds available for the end of the year, and since we have it under contract, I have no problem encumbering the funds, Mr. Chairman.
So are there... Jack?
Yes.
Are there any other improvements to the townhouse we're making, other than the lights?
No, the lights was over and above. The 13 was there. The 13 was repair some rock and try to get some of that jack that, just that walkway.
So you need the 13?
The 25 is... They need the 13 and 25 is over and above because you want to do all those lights to make them all come on at the same time while we're in the building, so...
I mean, I'd be happy to talk about encumbering 25, but I'm not happy about that.
That's not what you're going to do with that.
Outside maintenance has the stuff you're speaking of.
Correct.
Yeah, not that one. Not townhouse and village, yeah.
Oh, okay, so let's get back to the $1,300 then. Is the 13 somewhere else, right here?
So outside maintenance, we get $2,200 in here for level of walkway and replace...
Yes, and more items.
Right?
Yeah.
So, and then we had $1,300 in for improvements.
I think that was a place hole of the lights.
Might have been a place hole of the light. I was waiting for the estimate, so... And I got the estimate received about four o'clock.
Yep.
You have the estimate in writing?
It's in that packet.
Yeah.
So we could... So, uh... So we could zero out that townhouse improvements line for...
Or we could, you know, leave $500.
I would leave $500.
All right, I'm going to make a motion that line 70 changes to $500.
I'll second.
So that lowers out by 800.
Yep.
So 1,18, 2,47, so I have...
1,18, 2,47.
The total. Can I have that calculated, please? So, yeah, that's better. So we're looking at a 6% increase in that. That's what we're doing, so...
Those windows are major, so...
Yeah. All right, Alin, unless we want to talk about it tomorrow, I'm under the same option.
As I understand it, you've changed one line, townhouse improvements, to $500. And we've changed fire station maintenance at the bottom to 5,876, correct?
Correct.
And the new total is $118,247?
That's what I...
Bottom lines?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we approve that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So...
Nice job, sir.
Other... Oh, no, first to you.
Sorry, we just dropped in seven minutes. You had mentioned the fire station maintenance, something went from 500 to 1,500, but I think I was...
Yeah, it went from 1,300 to 500, the townhouse improvements.
Oh, excuse me, I meant for Adam's fire station.
As far as under fire station maintenance?
Yeah.
I raised the maintenance side of it.
Just wanted to make sure.
First maintenance, general building, it's supplied, it's usually 500, it went to 1,500.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay. I'm moving upward to emergency management.
So you were looking for a quote from the generator company in reference to a new generator.
Yeah, well, that would be in the article if we do that.
Right, but to... In order... Because I did put some stuff in this budget in reference to generators in the other buildings. If you're not encumbering anything in reference to those, I did turn in the estimates from Scott Thompson as far as those particular generators.
So right now, we're showing $5,500 on that line for generator maintenance.
Yes, generator maintenance. So if you're not doing anything with new generators in the Melvin and Mira Lake Station, you will be able to take out $3,000 from that particular line because I had to estimate the cost of propane installation and for that particular...
Oh, okay, so if we don't put generators or...
If you don't put... You can take out three grand.
Okay. Where are we there, gentlemen?
Uh, and you said you got quotes on the generators?
Yes, I turned those...
Okay.
They're in the encumbrance folder, the manila.
I'm looking in the wrong folder.
Uh, keep... Sorry, put a note on.
Yes, all right. So that's... There's the one and there's the other.
So these are new generators for Melvin Village and Mira Lake?
Right.
Right? Okay, so we've got $9,500 a piece, I think that's what we were...
Right.
And I couldn't get... I couldn't get the propane company out quick enough to give an estimate on that installation, but that's fairly simple.
And we don't have a... Or do you have a number on a new generator for this big thing?
Yes, yes, I do.
What's that number?
It's $90,000 just for the generator.
Okay.
What has happened is the generator that we have is currently a stationary generator mounted to a trailer. They can't make those anymore because of standards, obviously. Anything DOT that's bigger than 26 KW that's going over the road has to meet two or four emissions. So they have to meet all the emissions with the generators that are traveling over the road. So that goes from...
Another reason to have a generator that's only used at one location to be fixed, right?
What I would suggest is that we fix the current generator that we have for, you know, up to the $15,000 limit. And down the road, if we look at replacing this particular unit, look at working with the school district and putting it on site.
Do we have a number for a stationary generator?
I do not for that. But I'm sure that it'll be, you know, far less because you're not meeting the tier four standards and...
Right, and is any of the 95... Bounce around here, but is there any of the 95...
Of the 90,000.
Well, the 90, there's a lot of possibilities.
Yes, yes, there is.
Is there... Are there any grand possibilities for your tier four generators?
I would think so because there are stations, as far as their emergency stations, as far as it goes. I would think that we could do the 50/50 matching grant for those.
Because if we're going to go for a stationary at the school, and let's say we take the chief's recommendation, we fix the whole building, and then we go into the process of negotiating with the school. Now, at the end of the day, if we put a stationary at the school, we've got to rebuild a major generator on a trailer, does that become a generator for Mira Lake? I mean, we own it. Do we...
It's way too big for Mira Lake, right?
Yeah, 75 KW.
Well, the other thing is, if you've got a good functional fixed generator and you're anticipating putting a new generator in, it might may have trade-in potential at that time.
And there was no one there to give them a trade-in value.
Yep.
Okay, so that's down the road.
And I did have a conversation with Jack Widmer about the school district and generator installations. And he's... He was not... He said, "Well, he said, 'I know we put them in at the high school and middle school when they did the rebuild over there.'" He said, "I'm not..." He's going to check into whether they've done it at any of the elementary schools. He and I sort of agreed it made sense if we had a generator that's only for use at the school.
Worst-case scenario, we just ask a permission.
Right.
Without asking them to pony up any money.
Right.
That was the problem we had before, was get the permission to put it there.
Really?
Yep.
It was a major, major thing just to get the installation into...
Well, I think we've moved beyond that since they now have generators at some schools. And they may have a long-range plan to provide emergency power at all the schools over time. So, anyway, I think it's future potential.
Mr. Chairman, where we have written estimates for the repair of the big generator and where we also have written estimates for the two substations, would it make sense to have two different votes to encumber funds from?
Well, we're... I mean, I have certain goals that I try to reach. And one of the goals I like to reach is getting another hundred grand in on budget for funds. And we're getting tirelessly close if we keep pushing.
Yes, we are, that's why...
I mean, I think the 15 maybe would work. And we can...
Think about it.
My gut reaction is we fix the big generator and we go in on a year on the other two stations.
Does that make sense to you, Chief?
Yep.
And just remember to remove that three grand from this bond.
Well, we're going to go line by line in a second. So it's going to be 25, 50. I mean, how... We're just still talking, how that slide...
Yes. Well, you know, I'm on board there. I'd like to make sure the fund balance and can be able to reduce taxes, so...
And we're going to have more than we think because I'm kind of in the real... Throwing my marketing about the previous tax bills. But we'll plan that at the end of the year, how that lays out. Anyway, if we work with just the ones we currently have?
Right.
I think we're okay. I guess I'm talking French ahead of the whole...
Yeah, we understand what you're saying.
Can I add? We're on television, too. And we still have... I guess we still have some payments to make, but we're...
Yes.
We're doing okay.
Yep.
All right, are you okay with that, Chief? Let's do the same. Should we go line by line here?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, first line is operations, which is going to stay static at 800. Second line is forest fire expense staying static at 4,400.
Yep.
Grants and hazardous mitigation. Walk me through that.
The grants and hazardous... Or hazardous mitigation is that we have a plan that needs to be done this year, all hazards plan, and it's going to cost $4,000 to do the plan.
And that's what we had last year, we didn't spend it?
Wait, we didn't spend it. We had... That was there in case that we needed to do the operations plan for the town, but we're doing that, we're completing that, and we're almost complete with that.
Without a consult, you're doing it yourself, right?
I cannot do the hazardous mitigation one. So Lake's Region Planning Commission is going to be our company. We're all set with that. But they scheduled us for 2020, and that's when they'll get to that. So I had to either... I had to carry it over. We stopped spending all money in the emergency management budget that didn't need to be, you know, as far as equipment and stuff like that because of this $15,000 incumbent. The same with the fire department side of both things.
Okay, we all set with that, gentlemen?
Yep.
Equipment 3213, that's going to include 14 defibrillator pads and batteries at 1,668 and replacement defibrillator unit at 1,345.
And...
Giga, so 200. So that'll be at 3213.
Can I go back to the mitigation hazardous plan?
Sure.
Does it functionally make a difference whether we encumber the money we didn't use or whether it goes back into the general fund and we re-budget it?
Well, the emergency management side of things, as I said, the $15,000 that needs to be encumbered has to come from somewhere. So...
That $4,000 could be part of what?
That could be part of the whole thing.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. Because that... If we leave it the way it is and then we go to the generator maintenance line, which we've dropped to 2550, now we get to the emergency E-line. What exactly is that?
So as I had discussed, or briefly discussed in the couple of the past meetings, emergency E-line for police, fire, and EMS is a line that's going to be put into the building that is going back to the Carroll County Sheriff's Office. We're going to have equipment at our station that is going to be able to go direct to the sheriff's office through these E-lines to give us better communications. And it's all part of the upgrade that is going on currently as far as with the sheriff's office and stuff like that.
And that's also statewide, isn't it?
No, that has nothing to do with statewide. This just has to do with the...
So this is an installation cost or an annual cost?
It is an installation as far as annual cost, as far as it goes. So it... Each... Each... The police and fire needed to put up $1,400 for each for that.
And you say that's an annual cost then?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be 20... That is actually... This money will be going to the sheriff's office and they're paying the phone company direct as far as...
And what benefit is derived from this?
The benefit... Uh, the benefit is hopefully we have much better communications through the dispatch, um, through this.
And is there any grant possibility for that?
Uh, that, that is part of a grant.
So the fourteen, fourteen hundred bucks is not the grant?
That, that, that is not the grant, no. That is just installation and what we would have to pay for...
So annually we'll have to pay?
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred bucks?
For the, for the, that section.
And the total cost of this includes some grant funding? Is that the...
Yeah, it costs, it costs millions as far as the, the grants that, as far as what Carroll County has received in the Osceval Mutual Aid for that.
See, the ladder of ten cannon string, what you've got there.
And, and this is in part gonna replace what you do on the radio now. Is that right?
It, it is. What, what is gonna happen is there's a link that is across the lake that is really ineffective. It's called the Thelma Lake.
Thelma, huh?
And it's constantly, constantly down. This will basically replace that particular lake. When they get the new tower on Thompson Hill, that is gonna be at the top of Thompson Hill, this will go through that and then back to dispatch and it'll be going off the tower that we have.
So it's not a hard line, cellular?
They're, they're, yes, it is a hard line. This is, the E-lines are hard lines.
So that's twenty-eight hundred dollars and then you got a five hundred fifty dollar stipend, which we spent. So I'm showing a total of eighteen thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars.
When you take the three grand out of the generator maintenance, right?
Eighteen what?
That goes to...
Eighteen three thirteen?
Thirty-five fifty.
That, um, twenty-eight's gonna be recurring. So, but the... Is there anything else that isn't recurring? No, they're all the same. The generator maintenance line's gonna change next year probably.
And I did, I did include in that, um, the six hundred dollars for the town office, townhouse, highway department transfer station as far as the, the maintenance.
Annual maintenance on the...
That's something that was not there. Any other questions?
So... Does the twenty-eight hundred dollars replace something, equipment-wise, another line somewhere in our budget?
No, no, that, that is an addition. That's something that we had to...
Police chief's adding radios and all this other stuff.
That's his whole deal.
Okay.
Uh, I told him because, uh, cause he, he had to ask at some point in time. Cause he knew he had to come up with the fourteen hundred dollars. But before we get too far into the whole budget thing, I told him that I'd put it in emergency management too. So that wasn't something that he had to come up with.
So we're at about four hundred dollars in, in the total emergency management beyond the, the, the new recurring twenty-eight hundred bucks, right? That's, that's the big, that's the big, huh, that's the big piece. Yeah, everything else is...
Cause, and I know you're not the police chief, but we've gone from, uh, ten one seventy-five for new radio equipment, or new equipment. See, I don't, I don't know which is which. It's a twenty-one thousand, this is eleven thousand dollar increase in that. And there's a, in the radio equipment, there's an eight hundred dollar increase. Go ahead, Karen.
The twenty-one hundred grand, or twenty-one thousand, I should say, is, um, his cruiser PCs and printers, I think, for the inside cruisers? So that was...
And last year at this time, we added money to his budget for cruisers and he ended up not having to use it. There was a hunkered over there that he didn't use.
Oh, right, because of the Vidosa thing, yeah.
And you've got a three thousand six hundred, no, two thousand four hundred dollars on your new equipment line in the fire department. So it was, oh. Well, radio equipment actually went down. So...
It went down with five hundred and six thousand.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, you, you went down thirteen hundred bucks or whatever. Yeah, thirteen hundred dollars, and you worked for thirteen hundred dollars over here. This, it doesn't qualify as radio equipment? This, whatever it's called.
And it's more of a phone line.
Okay.
And I will...
The horse is dead.
Yeah, and, and, and this phone line connects radio repeaters...
Yes.
To the, uh, dispatch. Whereas we used to just connect them by radio signal.
Right.
Right. So that's, that's where the improved reliability...
It'll be able to do, yes, keep hold as far as...
All right.
So I'll move approval of the emergency management budget for a grant total of eighteen thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars a second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And I will look at if there's a way of saving money for the E-line. Through something else, I'll try to get that through.
Okay.
And how are we gonna finally repay us to the big generator?
Well, I think that's...
We'll get to it in the...
Yeah, we're gonna get to the, uh... Okay. Are you doing general government buildings?
Four.
I don't know. What else? We've got forty-one ninety-four.
I think you're all set on that one.
I think that, you just went through...
I think we're all done with that, right? Do we have more to, do we have more to do on government buildings?
No, because he included things besides, you know, you did everything, including Adams.
So we've got a total of forty-one ninety-four.
You're all set.
Okay. Which leaves us with just forty-three thirteen, other highways and streets. Nothing to do with that right now.
Right.
You're free to go.
And you're, you have a copy of that estimate for the blue handle?
Cat.
For cat.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming on, it's lovely to do.
Thank you. Well, he was up plowing when I came by. On, on other highway and streets, remember I had a conversation with Jim when he was here? About ice damage that we have every year?
Right.
On one dock and with its punky boards on the other one? I asked him, would it be appropriate to increase two thousand dollars for dock repair?
Yep, and he ended up giving a court action for eight hundred. So after he looked at the numbers, evidently it was less. The nineteen mile pier repair...
Yep, eight hundred?
Yep.
And how much for...
I thought we had a sheet for all these things.
I did this in conference. I think she wanted to accommodate.
I know the sheet.
This one has, let's see.
No, this is...
Put in the blue and show.
The encumbrance is correct, what you have left to encumber. I think that, um, I'm just looking. But that in her old quote, maybe it wasn't on encumbrances, excuse me, but I haven't written myself on other highways and streets. And his quote's in that folder.
Well, this is on Pier nineteen.
This is for both the docks, ice damage at Melvin Wharf and repair punky boards.
Cause we gotta, we gotta warn our, what happened in Pier nineteen. I'd rather keep it all in one place if we can. Are we gonna... Well, we had an error from...
We, we don't, we, we have that on the...
We haven't heard from Tyler yet.
Right, so that, that'll only happen if we got a design, we got numbers that we can put on a...
This is where I'm coming...
How close that we, we are to that piece.
I don't know if eight hundred dollars included the other wharf. Uh, we'd have to look at it.
Okay, what's in the eleven-two that we have in nineteen?
Let's see.
Eleven-eight.
I'm trying to remember, I have notes.
All right. So what, yeah, what she's got listed here now is, uh, what, eighteen hundred dollars?
Yeah, I have a note to myself, sixteen hundred dollars, you talked about this a couple times, you know?
Yep.
So those three things listed, I have as approximately sixteen hundred. And then add eight hundred for the nineteen mile boards, nineteen mile pier boards. And that's all I know, but I can't recall what the eleven-two is for, I have to look.
Electric heat.
Product that was done last year, I guess, I just can't remember.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you've, uh, come up with a number for, um, docks and bridges. I mean, it doesn't have to be eleven-eight plus eight hundred plus this plus...
I have it as just sixteen hundred plus eight hundred so far that we need for next year for twenty-four hundred.
All right. So when I look at what we've spent over the years, it, it's up and down. There are years when we put a lot in there and it's got some particular project. Twenty-five hundred dollars covered everything that you talked about, Karen. Is that correct?
Well, I had twenty-four, but yeah, I had sixteen hundred plus eight. I could pull my budget book from last year, get up to see what that... Those are the last amounts before, I can't remember what I...
I have a printout for December twenty-seventh, and it says docks and bridges eleven, uh...
Eight nineteen?
Yeah. Thirty-nine spent.
Right.
Then permitting fees, one thousand twelve fifteen spent. A total of twelve eighty-three point five four. I have nothing written under department head or selectman request.
Right, cause we don't need that from you.
That's what we're working on.
I just see those three things listed, boy, the electric pier and so forth. Those are the things that we know of so far for twenty-twenty. And then whatever you guys wanted to add.
So, I'm gonna suggest that we, under docks and bridges, we put twenty-five hundred dollars in there, which will cover electric of Pier nineteen, Melvin Wharf, mowing and trimming, and that board replacement.
Good.
And the, I, I, I'm not aware of any additional permitting expense. I think we already have that identified and encumbered. Is that, isn't that right?
That's what I remember. Let me just check my notes. I remembered that as well, but let's see. Right, due to morph design and permitting cost in twenty-twenty, you encumbered nineteen-two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, the other...
And fifty-six hundred for the engineering stuff.
Now, the other thing is county road bridge.
Oh, right.
Jim recommended four thousand two hundred.
We've already covered four thousand two hundred dollars.
Uh, not, yeah, not yet. The blues are the ones you haven't done yet.
Oh, but it's all within the ninety-sixty-one nine thirty-three. All right, so we're twenty-five hundred dollars there. Permitting expense, do you wanna put thousand dollars just so we got something there?
Yes.
Okay, so the total other highways and streets would be thirty-five hundred dollars?
Correct.
So...
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a thirteen thousand dollar reduction.
Yep.
Good, 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 good.
Good job.
So you wanna move on to encumbrances?
Uh, one item for encumbrance that I don't think we have listed here, but we already approved a while back, is that changing the storage hopper for the pellets at the townhouse. That's gonna, uh, Jack said that's gonna be completed probably next week, but it won't be billed issue. So it's thirty...
Did I know that, or are you just saying we have it?
Well, uh, we, we approved expending it about six weeks ago. They haven't gotten to it yet, so we need to encumber the money to cover that. It's thirty-three hundred and fifteen dollars.
I have another one to tell you folks about too.
Okay.
While you're at it, um, some confidential, so I can't say some of the parts in public, but, um, conservation legal has some work going on that they're not gonna complete this year in time. So they have three nine-two, three thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty cents left in their line they'd like to encumber.
All of them?
Mm-hmm.
How much of the, how much work do they have work to get done?
Evidently they do it all.
I mean, do they need to...
This is, this is ongoing work.
It's just something that was supposed to be completed by the end of this year and it didn't get done.
And do we have a contract, signed contract for it?
We do, right? I just, uh, you know what I'm speaking?
Let me read what you have there.
I don't have it written down.
Yeah. So, you know, it's, I mean, he's got the money left, he knows, he, he, he knows he's gonna have expense. I, I, I understand, I, I know what it's...
Oh.
All I'm saying is, we know we have expense coming, but, you know, in terms of encumbering, it's, it's pretty specific in terms of you have to actually...
Well, I don't know, I don't know that we, I mean, that's legal expense, correct?
Right.
You know, we've already created a legal line.
Right.
We've got a budget together. I just said, take out our twenty-twenty legal and move forward, I think.
Okay. Do you wanna add to twenty-twenty, do you think?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Just saying, cause it's thirty-nine hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Well, the, under the twenty-twenty budget request, that line is two thousand. I believe we are under contract with a lawyer.
I agree, and I think it's just the details that are supposed to be finished within the line.
I think it meets the budget laws.
I think so too.
If I remember from our last meeting.
Perhaps I could have the attorney write something up, we have an estimate too, if you'd like.
I think we, I don't have the twenty-twenty budget, but we have...
I think she did.
I thought you did, I thought you had the whole detail.
Yeah, she did a new printout, it should be...
No, I thought I had a detail, but I had a detail to come and fill it.
Oh!
Just give me the forty-one fifty-three line, I'll be happy.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so right now, we've got two thousand dollars, we've got fifty-seven thousand dollars in legal. Available gross money. Two grand of it's sitting in conservation.
I was given this message secondhand, so maybe Diane knows more than I do. I could ask her to come in.
Yeah, I don't know.
I like the idea of being in the account where it's supposed to be.
Yeah, conservation legal, it can run over.
Right.
I don't have a problem with that, if it has to, but I, I, I do have a problem with, with encumbering without an adequate defense, so...
Right, I don't have it in writing, that's...
Yeah, it's like she said, no, we're gonna use it, well, yeah, you're probably gonna spend more money in 2020 and spend money in 2019.
So we've had some other ongoing projects that we've encumbered, and have had whoever's doing the work provides with the document that says, here's how much more this is gonna be, and this is the timing, and this is what's gonna happen, and I don't have that for this.
Right, so, end of discussion.
Okay.
All right.
And it's, it's not like the process hasn't been explained to people, I...
Well, it's not like the process...
I, I, I agree with him, getting this information secondhand, I don't think we're on firm ground.
Right. Okay, do we wanna move on to encumbrances, I'm sorry?
I thought we had.
Well, we've got one, okay, I guess we have, you're late. Conservation didn't play into it. We all have this sheet, the blue.
Yep, yep.
So we haven't voted on the blue yet, I guess.
As well as the townhouse with thirty-three fifteen that used to be out.
So do you wanna take them one at a time, or do you wanna just take everything at once, I think?
Yeah, 'cause there's some of these I don't really think we're gonna do.
Yep.
I just don't.
All right, so I will move that we encumber three thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars for replacement of the pellet hopper on the townhouse heating system.
Okay.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Dame Road culverts.
And you can pass that down to Karen.
We might just start at the top of the blue. Dame Road culverts, fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. Are we paving Dame Road this year?
Yes.
Okay.
So the rest of it?
That's another question.
Is that another question?
Well, what we, what we, what we agreed before is, is that we were gonna... The, the other hundred and some thousand is...
Right, that's more than...
That's, that had been decided.
Right.
Uh, but the next segment of Dame Road and North Line Road is what we identified that we're gonna pave for 2020, and this fourteen four, he said is what he needed to re, to, to complete doing the...
Culverts.
The culverts on Dame Road.
Yeah, he was gonna use the SB thirty-eight funding, which you folks did approve, but then he didn't have time to finish because of weather and so forth, so this is what's left, that of work to do that.
Right, well, we use that money someplace else.
And you're not using it, that's correct, yeah.
So part of it is, I, I think he identified that he, that he had a place for that money to go, so we wouldn't lose the opportunity.
I had some conversations with Jim about this, and I liked his plan, he said he would like to start, and this is a perfect example, get the culverts and the trees done a year ahead of time, that way he can have the paving done at the beginning of the season, and, you know, the other thing he said is the one twenty-five is for a future project, and he says if someone at town meeting wants to know what's it gonna cost to, to finish that project, well, that, that's the information that he gave him.
Okay. So what's, what's our pleasure here, do you wanna encumber fourteen four? I'm entertaining the motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that would come out of the highway?
Well, we gotta go through that, at some point, we gotta run through the accounts, since we're putting up all this money.
Because we had SB thirty-eight, and we had...
That's, that's all, right, so, so the additional, the additional municipal aid and the SB thirty-eight has all, all been allocated, it's got nothing left.
And what about the new grant that we got?
That's the additional municipal aid, yeah, uh, if you look, if you look at, at these down here, this thirty-four thousand is the additional...
Right.
Municipal aid, and, and the other, what was left is this piece here, uh...
The roads, uh...
For the docks, right, some fee on the docks, okay, that's fine.
Is that gonna just come from the general budget, like we did the other ones, just the overall money that you have left, correct? Yeah. Okay.
Okay, next, entrance to Sergeant's Way.
I ended up not being able to obtain quotes for those.
Okay, town office aprons, you didn't get a quote for that?
Correct.
Okay, so neither one of those. Durbin Road Repair East Edge Pave Aswell.
Yes, we have a written estimate for that.
Five hundred fifty dollars?
Next line down.
Yeah, seventy-five.
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
I'm sorry. Seventy-five hundred dollars. Really? For that little ditch?
Uh, it's gotta be pitched two ways.
So we got a math problem, we didn't spend seventy-five hundred bucks on it?
Uh, Jim went through it, and we got for an estimate.
All right, what's your pleasure?
I'm in favor of it, so moved.
Second. I do agree, it seems like a lot of money for...
Yeah.
For some ditching.
We get two more stop signs out of it for seventy-five hundred bucks?
There might be more detail in the quote that I didn't put, perhaps, in the summary.
That's all right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. County Road Bridge Rail Repair Brush Sign Posts, Jesus. Sounds like the whole town. Is that all in one bid?
The forty-two hundred?
It is?
Yep. And that stayed with...
He's, no, it can't all be done, Dave, we're, we've got signs and posts.
Uh, he said that he has the signs, you know, on, in stock, and brush as part of, cutting brush along the side of the road.
All right.
Yeah, the brush, I thought, yeah, the brush, I think Jim said something about, he didn't know what that...
All I know is he says one thing to me over coffee, and then come in here, there's another thing.
So brush cutting multiple locations.
Oh, okay, it does say that.
That's not...
Okay, yes, I think what we're talking about here, um...
That's a separate one that Lloyd did that you're looking at?
Yeah, that's not what we're talking about there.
No.
Correct.
I didn't include it.
That's, uh, fifteen...
It's a separate quote.
Yeah, okay.
With the county bridge stuff.
All right, this is from the Whitworth group.
Great.
So forty-two hundred dollars to replace broken boards, and then to prep and coat with two coats of cedar stain. Right? Yeah. And that, but that, so we're not encumbering to, for the signs, that's just part of the normal sign budget.
Okay, I think I had those from a note from Lloyd, okay.
And the brush, the brush is something separate.
So it's the rain repair?
Right.
Yeah.
That's the structure we're talking about.
Right.
I'll move we encumber that amount.
I'll second, just for discussion, I, I just need to do some adding and subtracting here.
Yeah.
So if we add the seventy-five hundred bucks, we've already done that, the forty-two hundred dollars.
They're all included in that number.
Okay, um, and we make the windows and the paint job in the warrant article, we're gonna end up with about ninety-two thousand dollars coming out of the operating budget money, and the balance coming out of, um, the, the, um, WA encumbrances, SB thirty-eight, and the state municipal aid.
One thing that's not in your one sixty-one number is the generator repairs?
Yeah, you added the fifteen thousand.
Oh, that's what you're doing, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, um, so I'm gonna say yes to county road, but I'm gonna say maybe what we should be looking at is putting up the offices, windows, and painting into a warrant article.
No, I have, I have no problem on the voters' decision. State buildings.
Well, it, it's, I mean, you, you say that, and, and, and it's, I don't disagree there. Whatever, whatever the town meeting approves is what gets done. Another way to approach it is to do it in stages and not try and bite it off in one big chunk in a year, and, which tends to level the budget out a little bit, and, uh, make it a little bit more palatable to everybody in terms of total expense, so it's... It's easy to make a warrant article and say, okay, fifty thousand dollars, and we need to do this, and it gets voted down, so you just kick it down, keep kicking it down the road, and pretty...
Yeah.
You know, it's, I agree that adding a thirty-five thousand dollar expense in maintenance or building improvement line in one year is, is too big to kick, uh...
So you wanna bifurcate it, as I like to say? In that state, will we encumber the windows and ask for paint, or will we encumber the paint and ask for windows?
Or, or, or we do, do some, some of each, right, right, I mean, this, this includes all the windows, I think, right, and, and all the paint, uh...
We got...
I'm thinking the following things, we have a pretty smart legislative body, called town meeting. First of all, keeps it open, and it's transparent, and nobody can say anything that's, that's hidden, that's number one, number two is that as the library was done without borrowing money, there's an element in this town that says we wanna do things, you know, the reasonable way. The other thing is, the last four or five warrant articles that have gone through, um, Lang Pond Road, uh, the two dock areas, you know, boat ramps have all come in under budget, Sodom Road Bridge came in under budget, and we were able to turn money back. The other thing is that we do a warrant article, it's locked into that cause only, and if you don't use a thousand dollars, it goes back in the general fund, thank you.
Yeah, I get it, but we've got currently, without, we're not gonna, we're not gonna replace, not, not gonna do the... Well, we don't know about the Fender Road Corner Road, we're up at around eight hundred thousand dollars for warrant articles right now.
Already?
Already, exactly. Which is significantly less than last year, it's not less than our average, if you will.
Right, right.
What's your pleasure? Okay.
I think it makes sense to encumber for some, but all of it, and depending on what we have left, either goes in the budget or it goes on a, on an article.
Okay. Have we, not to protract the, um, discussion today, we haven't, we haven't brought the, uh, general government buildings to the budget, do we want to add anything there?
Uh...
I mean...
We have...
Town office improvements were two thousand bucks.
Right, and Jack, I know, had a breakout on windows of X number four. These in here and the, and the shed, and then the big windows was a, was a different number, that might be something that you push to the next year.
No, there's another thought that just came to me, when we're redoing windows, it's amazing in these old buildings what you find, so there ends up being some...
Is there gold in the walls?
And there, and there ends up being, having to be some painting, so I, I would like to do a piecemeal and go year by year, but this is a project, you never know what you're gonna find, and in our past buildings, we've done this, we made sure we're able to finish the project.
I mean, what are the, what are the, uh... I'd be a lot happier if we could encumber the paint at sixteen thousand and find some place to put the windows in measure.
I, I, I agree with you on that, uh, and again, do part of the windows in 2020, and, and the other part, and...
Yeah, the only problem I see with that is that it's tough to paint the building and then to replace the windows.
Um, you remember we talked about, as we replace...
Oh, here it comes.
Yeah, as we replace the windows, we're gonna be putting new outside trim around them.
The trim around the windows are gonna be AZAC, so it's not going to be painted, it's just gonna be carpeted, so...
Well, you, you hear what we're talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Doing some of the windows.
And the windows, that doesn't include the coupla, that's another whole project.
Right, so...
That's gonna be made out of tile.
I think you were talking about cost for windows here, and then cost for the big windows as a separate item?
Well, I have prices on, there's three different size windows in this building.
Right, so if we want...
Separate prices on every window.
So if we wanna do the, the shed windows and, and the windows, the small ones, what are we talking?
Just get the, or back out the second story windows on the barn here, and the coupla, we don't have anything on the coupla, we'll just do that all next year.
Yeah.
But I bet those four windows, that's probably thirty-five hundred bucks. So the little ones here are six and a quarter a piece.
And, and how many of those we have?
Uh, we did them all, it's, uh, eighty-one hundred and twenty-five dollars worth. Okay, now the bigger windows that are upstairs? The, the big windows, if we did all the big windows on the second, on the Matthews Brothers, is seventy-one eighty-four for all the big ones. But that's first and second floor? Correct. How much are they a piece? Eight hundred and ninety-eight. So you got thirty-six hundred bucks on the second. So you got thirty-six hundred bucks for the second. And that's a different window than these, those are the vinyl ones, because when we get the marb and they have not the integrity, you have to go the next grade out on the big ones, and those, if you went to those windows, they're two thousand dollars a piece.
Right. But so, so the shed windows are eighty-one twenty-five, is that right? Or does that include?
These?
Yeah.
These are six twenty-five.
Yeah, but you said eighty-one hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, for all of them, to replace them all, all where I'm gonna go left. You've got a few already.
All right. What about these double hungs, the small double hungs?
These ones in the front here, there's only six of these size.
Yeah.
And four thousand eighty-six dollars. Add on the police station, we've got the windows over there. It's three of these, like these right here, these are the same size as those over there. Then there's three barn sash on the other side, and there's So these, how much are these? A piece? Yeah. Six eighty-one, I'm sorry, the big ones are eleven hundred, these are six eighty-one. The big ones are eleven Big ones up top? Are eleven hundred a piece, yeah. Okay, six eighty-one? Yeah, and these, that's the same grade as those two, which And there are four of them in the police department? There's no big ones in the police department, there's three of these size right here. That's six hundred eighty-one dollars. Correct. So that's two thousand forty-three. And then there's And how much is the barn sash? Six twenty-five. Six twenty-five? Yeah. For the barn sash? Yeah. And how many are there over there, four? One, two, three, four. In the police department? Yes. Okay, so that's twenty-five, or what? There's actually five, there's one more. One in the trash room. Six eighty-one? Two, one, four, two, one, fifty-two hundred dollars. And eleven hundred dollars for the top, up above? Yeah. That's four. Upstairs is only two. What about the other end? First, well, there's only one on that side, one on this side, and then
And then the ones
One barn sash, one barn sash upstairs, hardly been changed. There's two big ones and one barn sash on the second floor. Okay, so knowing that we're hopefully gonna build a police station some point here, if we back out all the police station windows and those two upstairs windows, include the two upstairs with the coupla project, follow along though, we can take off two, four, twenty-four, seventy-two hundred, seventy-four hundred and twenty-four dollars for the windows. Seventy-four twenty-four, minus nineteen thousand. So we'd end up, let's say, encumbering eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and get the windows all done.
Yes, I like your idea, it makes sense to do as many windows as possible while they have the equipment here and the people here. Doing one window or one door.
They're gonna have to set up to do the coupla, isn't it? Yeah, it's a different project, because you're outside, you should all be vinyl, AZAC, whatever, because it's just it's a lot of rock. Right, but changing those two upstairs windows in the barn can be part of that project.
It can, yeah, sure.
Okay, all right, so
To level one first.
And we're talking about encumbering for the painting, is that right? And then putting the windows in the budget for next year, or?
Would be my preference.
Yeah. I'm good with that. All right, and so how much do we need to put in for?
Eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-five in town office improvements. So that would bring that up.
So moved.
You have two thousand dollars in there now, are we gonna need that two in addition to the eleven?
Is that for improvements or maintenance?
Improvements.
I'm not sure what the two is in there for, it's just worth putting there.
Okay, so let's make this
Just in case something happens, but
Ten thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. So that's gonna be eight-five-seventy-five. So that would bring our total
Hang on, you're running to numbers like used car salesmen right now.
Sorry.
I'm getting lost.
All right.
All right.
If we go to the general budget.
Yeah.
So town office improvements, I like it when you're lost.
Exactly, that's why you do it that way, I gotta take it to my manager and see if we can sell this thing.
Which line are you on?
Line
Four-ten, right?
Four-ten.
I'm sorry, no, seven-thirty, town office improvements, correct.
Currently, we have two thousand more, you wanna change?
We're gonna make that ten thousand five hundred and seventy-five.
Okay.
That's a thousand more than the window need.
Yes.
Ninety-five-seventy-five.
So add ten thousand five seventy-five?
No, we're gonna make it online.
You said, I thought you said eleven-five-seventy-five is what the windows needed.
Yeah, me too.
Did I?
Yeah.
Wait, did I?
Yeah.
Oh, it is eleven-five-seventy-five, okay.
So
Twelve-five-seventy-five.
Yeah, make it twelve-five-seventy-five.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, the two minute, throw me out. Okay, so we need to add ten-seven, twenty-five-seventy-five to the total. One, eight, two, four, seven, plus ten. So one twenty-eight, eight twenty-two.
All right, if I move that change? So moved. Second.
Okay, so that's a total for the forty-one ninety-four budget of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the windows are done. Now we've got sixteen thousand dollars and we could paint through.
And will we encumber that?
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor? I just that number could be less. I hope so. Because there's no sash to paint. Yeah.
Okay.
And what is that number currently, sixteen even?
Sixteen is what you have a quote for.
That's what I have a quote for, at least it's right now, correct.
And if we don't spend it, it goes back to the general fund.
Correct.
Great, right.
Okay. I'll use this with brush cutting, which is
I came up with some
Yeah. So, and some of the stuff that we have talked about before, that I disagree with, just for various reasons. If I remember correctly, the transfer station is that hill along the side going in, is that right?
Yes.
Which we have not mowed in the past, right?
It has been in the past.
It has been mowed?
Yes, since I've been on Selectmen, it's been mowed a couple times.
All right. I guess my feeling on these, Lloyd and I appreciate that they followed all of the done. All of it, like townhouse cemetery, cemetery budget, perimeter nineteen mile day parking lot, beach budget. I mean, I think, I don't wanna just pull money out of the air and get to the end of the year. I would rather we put together a program, budget accordingly on our general operating budget. I mean, how's it not gonna get, I guess, that's the question, how's it not gonna get lost in twenty-twenty-one? We aren't creating anything as a guideline for what we're after. I mean, you've, it's, I'm probably told the police chief wanted it to be in certain events.
Yeah.
We haven't done that, like department ads, for instance, the transfer station. That should be part of his budget, maintaining the entranceway and doing all that other stuff. But we haven't directed him to do that, I don't believe, that's, you know, shame on us. If we do it this way, I almost feel as though we're not getting to the point we want to get to.
I reviewed all the comments, and if you'll read about why we shouldn't do this or we shouldn't do that, I went back and double-checked it. The other thing is, I've been asking about this for a year, and several times, several times, the comments from this board was, well, just like electricity is grouped under one thing, or cleaning is grouped under one thing, or lawn mowing, so that's what I did. I'm asking, do we get the projects done proactively for one thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars?
So you want to go through each budget and add a little money? You want to, you want to encumber money from this year to get this done?
That's correct.
And that's where the assistance from my side's
Yeah, which I understand.
And the only other way to do it that I can see would be to go back and read you all the budgets. Which I don't think is gonna make us any further in the budget. And it's probably not a good use of our time.
Okay.
But do we wanna, I'm not killing this yet. We're still discussing it, do we want to do some of this?
Well, you mentioned that it's been done in the past. So it should already be in the budget if it's been done in the past, right?
Was it done like this before, where you just built a project and?
It's been done both ways.
Really?
Yes.
I don't know how it drops through the cracks then. You know, why isn't it that Clay isn't giving us an extra nine hundred bucks to do his job? I mean, that would be my
I know, when I started this project months and months ago, along with, remember the contractor do tree cutting and and some of these other intersections, I can go back to my notes and find it, we've talked about this since May, April, June.
All right, I guess I will, I will make a compromise. And this is just a suggestion, but I'm gonna make it in the form of a motion. We direct the trustee of the cemeteries to spend a hundred dollars on the entrance to the townhouse cemetery. We encumbered three hundred and twenty-five dollars to do the perimeter of nineteen mile day parking lot, and two hundred and sixty-five dollars to cover the town beach.
And I have the name of the contractor in writing that will do that.
Okay, fine.
Yep.
Thanks, that's, that really helps.
Yep.
Two, six, five, three, one, five, four, one, nine, five hundred and ninety dollars to be encumbered. Do I hear a sound?
Second, sir.
And I'll move the question. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, but let's make a point, although you'll be dealing with a different selectmen next year. Let's make a point, or you could be, to include some of this in budget, so when people bring their budgets forward, have this in front of us.
Five twenty-five, you said?
Is that it? Five hundred and ninety.
Five ninety.
Okay.
And one hundred, ask the cemetery to?
And direct the
That's it, cemetery trustees, you gotta take care of theirs.
When I spoke to the guy who does the mowing, he said he'd be glad it helps.
Windows seven replacements, question mark, yeah, I don't know, still on Windows seven? I thought we were releasing
So, we had a conversation a couple meetings back about the computers that Windows seven sunsets like in January or something, right? Concern about getting those done, so that we're not in an unsupported situation. Now, I made a suggestion, let's go ahead and do it now with you know, we're talking, what, twenty-four hundred dollars? With money from this year's budget, not be worried about, gee, maybe this is a plus up from what we did in this budget in the past, we can't doing it in January.
So you looked at the computers we're replacing, which I don't have Windows seven. The ones we're getting, the new ones.
Right, these are replacing units that
We've got some units that are still gonna be in operation with Windows seven.
I didn't know, people have asked me if they should, if they should make their computer purchases before town meeting. They've had the money put into their budgets to do so. It's like, is it okay to spend that money, that's, I'm putting it in my budget before
These are two different questions, though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, if they're gonna spend twenty-three hundred bucks on their computers out of their current budget, we don't need to encumber anything.
Oh, no, next year. It's in the twenty-two.
Well, we're
Oh, okay.
We're talking about encumbering money now. Buying those computers now, rather than waiting until after the computer support expires.
Okay, so this is replacing, it's not like putting in a chip and upgrading the system.
One of them is, one of them we're upgrading, but just enough where you don't lose time.
And the twenty-three, do we have it, do we have that from Tom, or?
Yeah.
I'm gonna entertain your motion, Mr. Selectmen.
So I'll move twenty-three fifty for the replacing Windows seven computers.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I've kind of lost track of where we ended up here, but
What was the number, twenty-three fifty, so?
Twenty-three fifty.
One sixty. It's only six. Oh, we, the windows, that's what goes, that's how.
I can update the spreadsheet if you'd like.
Okay, so we're encumbering sixteen, so we've got what, nineteen? So nineteen less
Twenty, you have a thousand on the other line underneath that.
Yeah.
And you already added the generator and the townhouse.
I'm gonna add the generator, so we have one sixty-one, nine thirty-three, plus fifteen thousand.
Minus twenty.
Is it a total, is it twenty?
Well, you got nineteen thousand for windows that was up here, so it went from thirty-five to sixteen.
Yeah.
Right? And you got about a thousand dollars for brush cutting that we're not gonna, we did five ninety instead of fifteen eighty-five. I think everything else was just along.
Okay. Minus nine ninety-five.
Plus, you gotta add in the thirty-three hundred dollars that we did for the
Right, townhouse. Let's do the positive first.
So the answer is, we're pretty close to the wash there.
I have
You backed twenty grand out and you added about nineteen in. Right?
I'm sorry, I have, if I can stay with you. I have one four five, two five three, let me just check myself. That was thirty-three fifteen.
One six oh five, six five three?
I have one four five, two five three, so I changed the
Did you add the nineteen thousand? No, we took the nineteen
Sixteen, right?
Sixteen.
So thirty-five went to sixteen.
Yeah.
The line underneath it, fifteen eighty-five went to five ninety.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah. Add the generator in.
And the generator is what, fifteen?
Yeah, let me make sure I added that in. I did not put that in, excuse me.
Right, and the pellet hoppers, thirty-three fifteen.
Okay, yeah.
So that's why I say we're within a thousand dollars of where we were.
Yeah, one hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty-three, and that includes
How can I be four hundred dollars up?
Includes municipal aid and everything, not just twenty, nineteen bucks.
There was a detail on my truck.
One six oh, comma
Two five three is what I have, all the encumbrances.
I'm all done with you.
That includes
Okay, so a hundred and sixty-one thousand bucks is what we're gonna drag out of our current budget.
Well, some, some SB thirty-eight and some municipal aid, not all.
So you're at one sixty-four fifty-three?
For all encumbrances, including municipal aid.
We didn't cover money from the general
I have one hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty-three.
Two hundred and fifty-three?
Yeah, I can dice it up between SB thirty-one and total.
Well, I've got those numbers here.
Oh, that's true.
So we've got WA encumbrances of nineteen one one four.
Okay.
Minus SB thirty-eight is eighty-one twenty-eight.
Okay.
Minus state municipal aid is thirty- Minus state municipal aid is 3412. So 98,909 dollars.
37, oh, 36,000 dollars off.
98, what?
909. That's coming out of the operating budget surplus.
And we do have to encumber for the generator, which we haven't done yet, right?
I thought we did.
Did we do the generator?
Yeah, I thought we did when we...
I know, I knew.
Actually, good call. No.
No, we talked about it.
Yep.
Yes, you said you did.
I don't, I don't, I have notes on my paper in the notes in a minute, but I don't think you did.
All right, so what's the amount on the generator?
15,000.
No more than 15,000, that's it.
So I move that we encumber $15,000 for repair of the mobile emergency generator.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's already in this 98,000 dollars.
Yep.
So we don't have to change anything.
What's interesting about that, I'm not surprised, but about any new generators on wheels has to have different emission standards.
As if you're going to run it down the road. You know, Bobby has found it to his advantage to have that.
Oh, yeah.
Gentlemen, can I bring up one subject we've been talking about since the 9th of July? And you asked the road agent to get you some funds. Remember, we talked about a proposal to cut trees? Is it a dead issue for this year?
Well, I think the way it's presented, it's a dead issue for this year because we don't have a bid on it really. And I know he's marked some trees. Somebody has put a care out there.
Yep.
And the current budget will not cut all those trees.
No, it sure won't, but he's going to have a budget, he's going to run out of the year here in two days. So, and I don't think he's cutting trees after it snows as much anyway. We're supposed to have a foot of snow by the end of the field. So, I mean, I think it's moved until the spring. He's got a budget to work then. I think it's a good idea. I don't know how much the co-op's cutting. I mean, they've butchered Ledge Hill Road and they're still working on it.
Well, even goes one step further, and I don't know what we can do about it. A company that's doing, just up from your house, they dump their crap in the cemetery. They dump their logs right in the drain. And guess what? That's going to overflow next storm.
Yeah. Well, we can call the co-op, and we should call the co-op because just for public consumption, we have the oldest, we're 100% New Hampshire electric. We have the oldest electrical co-op in the country, here in New Hampshire. And the only co-op in the country that has never done a distribution to its members, ever. So when they're sitting on those millions of dollars, which are about tax breaks, we should think of, let's give them some money back to their owners.
There you go.
All right, so far this year, we're 400 dozens are down. How'd that happen?
Good management, Mr. Chairman. It's your county experience. How's that?
It's the county taxes. So, can we have Diana?
Sure.
All right, thanks. I think she's next. Pay the village district taxes?
No, we collect the taxes.
It's under expenditures. That's what's confusing.
Right, so what she told me is the way she has to set it up, it ends up falling into an overall...
A whole north country.
Simple question.
Yeah.
Okay, you've taken the county tax money and the village district tax money and added it back in.
Right.
So that's actually what we've got spent in our operating budget?
And...
Year-to-date expenses.
Operating and capital.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
And...
And what is that amount?
And that's how our meeting was.
Yeah, that's, this is, the slash page is the warrant articles, not the operating budget.
No, that's the rule.
No. Yes, that's just the warrant articles.
Okay.
What you want is this page.
All right, there we go.
This is the operating budget.
Okay.
What's left, right? That's more.
That's what's left?
195,000.
Correct.
Right.
That's what we spent. This is what we spent, and this is what's left.
What's the 16,192?
That's what we previously encumbered. Right, and today we took that up to 98, right?
Let's make sure. I thought... 16,192.
I have an Excel spreadsheet that I, that one right there.
Good.
That's what you want to use. I want to use that.
Yeah, do want to use that.
Well, they did a bunch more today, so. Okay.
16,192.
See, this is the operating budget encumbrances that you did sort of prior to this meeting. See that number right there?
I see that, yeah. Yeah, it's not the same. Something happened.
Well, because one of those is, it's still...
Oh, I know what it is because it got paid. I paid some of this off.
Okay.
I paid a bill, that's why I reduced it.
Okay, so we're sitting on 195,910 dollars. And we want to encumber 91,340.
Yeah.
In addition to the encumbrances of WA, SB 38.
That's all outside the budget, so.
Yep, right.
That's way...
Right.
Well, remember you said you'd kind of like to save 100,000 eventually going...
Yeah, that is 104,000 bucks that's going into the undesiccated funds.
Your strategy's paid off.
Well...
All the savings.
All the bills are in the...
Wallet's still empty until he gets a check.
That's right.
So do we want to isolate where the money's coming from, or are we just going to say, take it out of the budget?
How can you, because we know of some chunks that are there, but other than that...
The final...
Okay, I mean...
I think it's that law changed, I guess.
So can we get the numbers that we've done, Karen, to Diane?
Of course.
Like in the next 20 minutes, and maybe she can plug them in, and then I can at least take a look at it.
Sure.
We're meeting again on Monday, but, I mean, the encumbrances are done.
Yep.
I'm just trying to, I know I've got a budget meeting coming up.
It's the following day, so we meet, you meet the 6th, I meet the 7th.
Yeah, I need, I need to be in town.
Well, you want to get together on Friday?
I'm not doing anything.
Okay, so if, you know, if we want to just... Encumbrances are done today because we're going to change years, but...
Well, I don't mind lying to the ERA.
I have some budget.
You know Joe's camera's still running.
I will get rid of the camera.
So...
Budget committee's agenda is pretty full for the 7th.
Yeah, well, we can stay late because they have that little...
They were also talking about having a work session.
Selectmen's reporting, so I'm going to...
Right, yeah.
I'm sure.
So I'm happy to gather again on Friday to...
We've got to sign checks anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
So you want to just pick a time?
Whatever works for you.
You said it, Mr. Chairman.
At 9:00.
Okay.
So we'll meet again here to sign checks at 9:00, do a final review of what we've done, so we can make our excuses going forward.
Yep.
Any other public comment?
I have two items, if you don't mind, I know it's a work session. The first thing was Jim Bean was supposed to get you numbers from this guy at the harbor who cuts trees at $200 a tree. That's never come here before, so that's one of the things. The other item, this is probably mine for Bill, but Karen, what the hell's the difference between Windows 7 and Windows 10? Are you having trouble with Windows 7? And I am, before you say anything, that they're not supposed, they're not going to cover it. How many times have we called our computer guy and said, hey, my Windows 7 isn't working?
Windows 7 will be supported by Microsoft after like January.
Yeah, I know, Bill did say that.
No updates, viruses, malware, things can intrude.
Okay, have you had any problems?
No.
How many years have we had Windows 7?
It's been supportive until...
Yeah, it's been supportive until next month.
But if we get Windows 10, I guess my rest of the question is, how many other programs are you going to have to upgrade to adhere to the new Windows 10 that won't work under Windows 7?
It depends on what version of Office people have.
So when we do something like this, shouldn't we call our computer ace and have this big discussion? Oh, you already have?
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a whole layout of what everything needs to be.
So the issue with the operating system not being supported by the manufacturer anymore is, on an ongoing basis, they do these updates to the software.
No, I understand that.
And one of the primary things they're doing is fixing little...
Quirks in their program.
Well, it's not just quirks, but places that people have exploited with viruses and stuff like that. So once they stop supporting it, which is next month, then it no longer gets any updates, which means that the opportunity for the computers to get hacked goes up. So that's why it's important to upgrade to the current system.
But that's a virus issue, right? And the service protected and the computers are protected, so they don't get...
Actually, I take it back. One of the computers did have trouble, Ian told me, ever since she thought...
Yeah.
She said, I'm glad I'm getting a new one because she has been having trouble.
I'm just bringing the question to light because every time we turn around, we're getting either new software, we're getting this, we're getting that. I understand this is a business, and we want to protect our business, okay? But then again, overkill, so you'll have to learn how to use Windows 10.
I already have one.
I understand that, okay, but assuming that nobody did, we're going to switch over. So my first concern is, all the programs we have work with Windows 10 as opposed to buying more money for upgrades so that they will work with Windows 10.
The only thing that people might have to replace is Office, and they might not have to. Someone just getting carried over.
Exactly. That's my comment. Thanks for listening.
So what they do with the operating systems is, of course, there's an overlap. So Windows 10 has been out here for five years.
We've got a $4 million a year operation. We're spending less than 10% of it on IT.
Yeah.
And probably less than 1% on IT. What do you have there, Phil?
I enjoy watching people work. And you fellows certainly work, you don't...
We don't work.
I wish more of the budget committee members would attend these or watch the YouTube videos, it'd make things go a lot quicker. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thanks for playing today. It's always nice to have somebody else in the room.
You again? What?
This is being really ironic. I don't know if this matters or not, but this is my first one. So there's two lines that you moved on, particularly in general government buildings, but you didn't do a final vote. Does that matter?
I did.
Yes, yeah.
You did the overall general budget. It doesn't matter. There's a couple of lines that you moved in on, I don't know. And then this stuff kind of corresponds.
So it's on the record?
Okay, other government buildings?
Sorry, I don't know if this is important or not. Townhouse improvements and fire station maintenance, you moved on but didn't do a final vote.
Yeah, 1,288,822.
I just meant the particular line.
Which line under fire?
Oh.
Townhouse improvements, you moved to make it 500.
No, town office improvements, we went to 12,750.
Well...
I'm sorry, you had a singular motion made for townhouse.
Yeah, but we did adjust the townhouse...
To 500.
To 500.
13.
A motion was made and seconded, and it just didn't have a final, that's all.
Will you go to the first line that you have a question on? What is the number of the line in the title?
419402730, townhouse.
Did we encumber for those lights?
Yeah, the lights you did.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, painting, rather.
So...
Let's see, bear with me. Lights...
2,500 bucks.
And what was the motion that was made and seconded but not voted on?
I'm sorry.
$500 on townhouse improvements. Down to 1,300, which was on this particular crap. So we're reducing that line to 500. It's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. And then, but maybe this is a good reason why we revisited this because I don't think you encumbered for the lights, but we'll go back to that in a second. The fire station, fire station maintenance, same idea.
Fire station maintenance, we...
What line?
Moved and seconded 5876 dollars.
Correct. It was 41940463.
It was nothing.
Yep, that's right.
Right. Made a second and we didn't vote?
You just, you did a discussion and that's...
Just, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. But Bill, you raise a good point, the lights, right?
Did we encumber for the outside lighting improvements at the 25 minutes we talked about? We have the contract on it.
Okay, well...
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
I will move that we encumber 2,500 dollars for the lighting improvement, outside lighting improvement at the townhouse.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then just the other thing I have as a correspondence folder for today with a couple of things if you could give me those. It literally says for today on one of them.
Happy New Year, gentlemen.
Happy New Year.
Karen?
Thank you.
And Joe?
Yes.
Happy New Year.
I think it's the second to last one.
This one?
Yeah, thank you.
It's a gamini folders.
I know, maybe there's a better way. If you only do it a different way, I'd be glad to.
Colors. Okay, Franco Rossi, do we want to make a contract with Franco Rossi for $3,000?
That's the one you folks met with at the last meeting, it's just, that's the agreement.
Is it one signature?
I believe so.
I move that we execute the...
Contract.
Tax map maintenance agreement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's all through this side. Aye. And...
That's that grievance thing. I did cater it to the town.
Did you update it for the town?
I did.
Okay.
With you as the grievance officer.
Okay.
That's fine.
Chairman of the board.
Okay, then we'll have to keep an eye on that. If something happens to the board, you have to make sure. This is a grievance policy for the federal government, so if we get federal grant money coming through here, and we have an individual or a group that want to have grievances against our process.
Right.
This is the grievance process.
Right.
And it's made, the chair, well, no, this is worded right, Karen. It's the chairman of the board of selectmen.
Right, in case anything changes.
So, next year it'll be Lloyd, the year after it'll be, is the grievance officer. Any other motion besides this?
So I move...
No, I'm fine.
Okay, second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So this will bring us into compliance of the village...
It's the same thing with FEMA, we needed a bidding process.
What is today, the 20, 30?
Chairman, could I bring something up that I was made aware of yesterday? We have an employee whose anniversary date is in December, and we haven't received word from the planning board when she gets merit or job performance review. Is it a new point?
We don't have a budget.
And that leads to the fact that we have some that haven't been completed or submitted to us.
All right, so let's make a point in January, bring that stuff up. We still are waiting for the chief to come up with his job evaluations. We're going to have a little bit of time on our hands. What we need to do on Monday is review our warrant articles. Because I think we want to put some money aside for the police station, just my thought. Just my thought.
Yep.
And get out, clean up this list, so that we don't have something we've encumbered money on, whatever.
Technically, though, we have to wait until a certain date, in case anyone wants to submit a warrant article, right?
No, that, that's petition articles, that's not, that's not our...
Yeah, we can, we need to review ours, send them up.
And get them up.
And we could make more up as we go along, if we wanna keep doing it. All right, I'll make a motion, it'll be the general.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.